Allegiance, sorry, seemed to have lost my flag. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. So welcome to our March first, two thousand twenty-two, to our in school committee meeting. I'm gonna ask for motion to approve that can, is there anybody signed up for open forum?
Harry, is that a me question, or does that, is that something?
Carolyn has notifications, but I'm not sure he knows. So.
I don't have anything.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Dr. Larkin, there are no items on the consent.
There are no items, you're correct, okay. And I don't know if Representative Edwards and Senator Fiegler are gonna be available tonight. I thought that maybe they were not gonna be able to.
Yeah, there, I just resent them the link, so they should be signing in.
Okay.
Yes, they're gonna sign in now, I'm re-sending them the link, just give them a minute here, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I see Senator Fiegler is coming in now, and I just sent one to Representative Edwards.
Okay. Welcome, Wally, you're muted, so you may wanna mute.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, thanks for attending, and wait a second for Jay.
Yes, he should have that now, just give him a couple minutes, thank you.
We're in the middle of a Providence College basketball game, you know?
Yeah, we are. Yes, we are.
Especially being a PC graduate, so.
Dr. Larkin, do you want me to admit the individuals at this specific agenda item, or did you want me to admit them all right now?
Uh, you mean when people who wanna talk about the mask policy?
Or i- in general, just?
Them, we usually, uh, there's no issue with admitting them now, I'm fine with that, that's fine.
Okay.
Everyone is supposed to be courteous and talk when called upon, so hopefully they, everyone will kinda. So I see Jay there now, is that Jay Edwards' iPhone? Or is somebody else, Jay?
I, no, I believe that's RJ.
All right. Representative, and there you are. Greenly masked, hey Jay, so welcome to Representative Edwards and Senator Fiegler. And I believe you have a presentation to make, so I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Sanquini and Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and as you can see on the agenda topic there, we're fortunate this year through the donations of many and the hard work of many to be able to offer our middle school students for the first time a baseball and a softball program to be able to compete with our rival schools that are in the area that I've had it for, and it couldn't have happened without the hard work of a team that Mr. Dakota served on and the outreach from our politicians, Mr. Edwards and Mr. Fiegler both generously donated toward that. So let me turn it over to Mr. Dakota for a moment to talk a little bit about getting to this point and then recognize our, our, our allies.
All right, that's perfect, thank you, Dr. Sanquini, so Dr. Sanquini hit the recap, so in the, we have some people here like maybe Ms. Wardell, people that will know, we've never had a program at Tiverton Middle School for softball, for baseball, going back to the seventies. And since I have kids in Little League, it's something that was kicked around and discussed by parents probably for a year or two. And this year we were able to, to bring that to reality, to fruition. And so had a meeting with the parents and one of the meetings I invited Representative Jay Edwards, he came, he showed up and he let us know he would help us with the help of Senator Fiegler and through their diligent work, they were able to each raise forms of grants, two thousand apiece for a total of four thousand dollars towards our program, which is huge, we need so much in the first year to get off the ground. So I wanna say thank you, but I'd like Representative Edwards and Senator Fiegler to say a few words and really appreciate it.
I'll defer to the rep.
Oh, Wally, I always defer to my senior.
Geez, I had another birthday too, you know? Now, we just, Jay and I just honored to be a part of this process. As a former athlete in Warren High School, I played soccer, baseball and basketball. And I can't stress enough the importance or the foundation that exists in the junior high level, middle school level. And so it's important that we continue that process and I was honored to provide that funding or partial funding necessary for this particular venture. And I wish the students well because another aspect that people don't realize is the importance of sports and education, the student athlete, and how much better the athlete does during that season when he's playing a sport, and so we're honored to be able to accomplish that goal, so thank you.
When I first became a rep, one of the very first grants I was asked to get was for the Tiverton Middle School Athletic Program. And as always, I've reached out to my colleague Senator Fiegler to assist me on that, so we can, if not always double, we can always get much more bang for our buck when we get money from both chambers. And it's always a pleasure and an honor to get, bring home money for our school system and to work with my, my friend and colleague Senator Fiegler. So we look forward to many more years of getting grants for you, hopefully. And we look forward to seeing the baseball and softball teams out there next, this coming spring, hopefully.
Yes, thank you to both, and what we'll do is we'll get together in the next week or two. We will get together with some of the people that help with this committee, maybe Mr. Murray, the athletic director, we'll do a nice photo op, we'll have you guys come down, and then when we have opening days, we'll invite you again to come on down and check it out. So thank you both, really appreciate it.
Later, these checks timely, so you wanna make sure you, you get the actual sooner than later, Michael.
Okay, well, why don't we try to do something for early next week, I'll send you guys both a notice.
And also, if you could, please send us your schedule, I'd, I'd like to see the kids in action, so.
So would I.
Yes, yeah, as soon as we get it, I will absolutely get it to both of you, that you have my promise on that, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate taking the time out, thank you.
Thank you, Jay. And thanks, Mike, for your sort of leadership and help with getting this off the ground, so.
All right, thank, thank you, guys.
Take care now.
It is, I shaved, keep it trimmed at whatever setting that is.
Yeah, that's it, I like that.
I'm having some Zoom issues here. I don't know who's the host, but you might want to take Jay out. All right. Good. All right, the next item is the discussion possible vote toward TMS bathroom construction bid to Martone Construction Company, Dr. Sanquini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, we made an emergency request to RIDE School Building Authority for the purpose of renovating the bathrooms at the middle school, we were granted a half million dollar ceiling to do that work through RIDE. So we immediately worked with our RGB architects to put out a RFP for renovating the bathrooms at the middle school. We received several requests, I know you have that document in your packet, in there you'll see that Martone Construction was the low bidder, but simple, but after that, we did a complete reference check on the work they've done at other school districts, they came back very positive. So a combination of them being the low bidder and exemplary references, we'd like to award to bid to Mark Conson Construction, so they can start putting it scheduled together to get four bathrooms done at the middle school in the most timely process as possible.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for motion to award the bid.
I'll make the motion to award the bid to Martone Construction Company.
I'll second that.
I'm gonna open the Florida discussion from the committee. Mrs. Farnworth?
Um, sure, I, I, ha- having sat on the building committee meeting where the building committee did back this recommendation back in early February, I believe it was. I will assure you all that there were a number of great questions and challenges posed by the members of the committee with regard to the selection of the contractor. And, you know, especially since the district had not used the contractor before, Dr. Sanquini, I commend you for doing some background reference checking before we got here this evening. I do think that in the future, I would like to see a little more detail than just the bid sheet. Perhaps a list, a breakdown of exactly the work that they're gonna be doing. That's my only suggestion, but other than that, I will vote to approve.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dakota.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mrs. Pavo?
I have nothing.
And Miss Palish?
Nothing.
Okay, and I don't have any questions myself. But again, thank you, and thank you Diane for serving on the building committee as well. Any questions from the public, Miss Delcourt?
Not this time, Dr. Larkin.
And any questions from any of our administrators? And Sam and or Emma, any questions?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask for a vote. Miss Farnworth?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavo?
Yes.
Mrs. Palish?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so motion passes five zero.
Yes.
Mrs. Palish?
Yeah.
Getting some sort of feedback all of a sudden.
Our participants need to mute themselves when they enter the room, sorry about that, Doctor.
So, okay, yeah, and who's ever host, I don't know if it's you, Peter, or Julie. I have found that I have to be rather aggressive in muting people because they'll unmute and then mute. So if we've, it wasn't such a good idea to let so many people into the room, but at any rate, if everyone could please remain muted unless you're called upon to speak. Even me, all right, so next item of business is discussion mask policy number one, one, eight, seven, possible vote. So this is a opportunity to consider whether or not we will continue with our current mask policy once the statewide mandate expires on March fourth. So in order to open the discussion, I'm gonna at least put before the committee, or ask for a motion to be put before the committee to suspend our current mask policy.
Dr. Larkin, I will make a motion that we suspend our current mask policy number eleven eighty-seven effective March fourth.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded, I'm gonna open up the Florida comments from the committee first, and then our student representatives, then our administrators, and then members of the public. And I guess I'm gonna unless there's an objection, take the opportunity as chair to speak first.
Dr. Larkin?
Yep.
Just for a point of order, should the should the motion be that we would be asking to suspend the policy effective March seventh? Which is, cause March fourth is at the end of the day, I believe, when the order is lifted?
Uh.
I wanna make sure we get any votes correct.
Yeah.
The executive order expires at five PM on the fourth.
I will amend my motion to suspend the policy as of five oh one PM on March fourth.
I will second that amendment.
Okay. I'm gonna take a vote then on the amendment unless there's any discussion. Mrs. Palish?
Yes.
Mrs. Farnworth?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavo?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes, so the motion is as amended. Okay, so, you know.
So just so people understand, Dr. Larkin, so now we're going to, the motion has been amended, that's the motion, now we're going to discuss.
Correct, right, and I'll open the discussion to the school committee, then to our student representatives and our administrators and the public. And as I said, I'm gonna, I guess, jump in first, because I guess I like to be the first one in the water with the sharks, so I think it remains important to realize that we've been successful at doing something that nobody thought we could do two years ago, and we've been doing it now for two years. And there have been many, many ways that we could have failed easily. And for that, we must always thank our administrators, certainly, maybe above all else, our teachers, our other staff and our families and our students for actually kinda keeping their head down, keeping, just continuing to to work under relatively difficult situations, first in distance learning, then in hybrid, then in, in person, and I think we've seen that payoff. Because we had, we didn't have anywhere near the issues with learning loss, at least by, as measured by Rycas, as many other districts had. And in fact, I think the state as a whole did better than many states, including sort of the vaunted Massachusetts, which has always held up as the national standard. So kudos to everyone for having kind of gotten through to this point where we can even talk about not having masks anymore. But I think it's also important to realize that mask on mask, so a student or a person who has a mask interacting with another person with a mask is one of the most powerful mitigating strategies that we can take. The only other more powerful mitigating strategy is actually vaccination, which remain, of course, very safe and very effective. So the other thing is that unmasking is not without risk. We do not know, and the models do not actually try to forecast what will happen when or if a district and my, unmasks after the mandate expires. And so when you consider the fact that actually the most noxious effects of the so, the social and emotional effects of the pandemic are actually not from masking, but actually from being out of school. That being in school is clearly what is best for students. That we do run that risk, that we run the risk of a pandemic or a mini epidemic erupting in Rhode Island and other states, or even interpreted in itself when we unmask, and we just don't know what that possibility is. And then also, it's important to realize that we've actually had a significant decrease in other respiratory illnesses, including flu. At the very beginning of the school year, sort of around October, November, we saw a big spike in influenza, and there was a huge concern. I can tell you on the part of the medical community that we would have a significant flu epidemic this year. Probably as a result of Omicron getting people to mask more scrupulously, as well as getting vaccinated for both COVID and influenza. That actually sort of evaporated, but it does have the risk of reemerging, meaning influenza, and again, other respiratory viruses when or if we unmask. So that has to be kept in mind. It's also important to understand that this decision is a community decision, it's not parent parental choice. Because the choice one parent makes is a choice for all parents, so this has to be a community decision, and I think that's why we're here tonight. Both as elected representatives, as administrators, as student representatives, and as members of the public, that we have to make this decision as a community and understand the impact of it. Whether it be to continue masking, to stop, to stop masking, or to take other measures. So I think that's the important thing, is that we are all in this together, we always have been all in this together. And I think COVID has just really taught us that more significantly than a lot of other things may have. And we may, if we do suspend the policy, we have to understand that we may need to reinstitute it. If we do have a surge in cases or a new variant comes along and starts the next wave, whatever number wave that is, I've lost count myself. We have to understand that that, that may be something that we need to do. And I guess I would call on all of us to take a decision to unmask is also a person, a take it as a matter of personal responsibility then to become vaccinated, our vaccination rates are much better than actually are reported by the Department of Health, because we don't capture Massachusetts data. But the vaccines are safe and they're effective. And they are more, far more safe and effective than many medical interventions we undertake routinely. And certainly more safe and effective than many of the therapies that are available for COVID. Such as antivirals and remdesivir and steroids and anticoagulants, so you know, if we're gonna do this, I want everyone to sort of think to themselves, should I go ahead and get vaccinated now, because that is by far the most effective way of preventing serious illness and death from this, from this virus. And lastly, I wanna make sure that we all understand that we must respect the choice of others, particularly to remain masked. Because they have personal concerns either for their family or for themselves, or for their just peace of mind, and that we are clear that we will set an example of tolerance and compassion for our students, for our staff, for our families, whatever their views are about this issue. So right now, we are at medium transmission, and I don't wanna get too much into the weeds of this, but there's a bit of a disconnect. If you're looking at the current recommendations by the Rhode Island Department of Health, our transmission rates by their recommendations are that we maintain indoor masking, what do I mean by that? The state of Rhode Island is now having a rate per one hundred thousand of something like a hundred and twenty or a hundred and twenty-two cases on average per day. And so again, I think it's because they haven't actually modified their recommendations, but by that rubric, or by that number, the Department of Health is still recommending that we mask indoors. If you look at the CDC's current recommendations, we are actually in what is called medium, which is that we have less than two hundred for cases per one hundred thousand transmission, and we have a relatively low rate of new hospitalizations and a relatively low rate of total beds occupied by patients with COVID. So that puts us at medium, so by the CDC recommendations, we can, I think, following science, following best medical practice, entertain the idea of unmasking. That is something that I think is difficult to understand, I've been actually looking at data for the last seventy-two hours on and off. And it takes a while to kind of penetrate all the various websites and, and data points. But that's kind of where we are right now, we are technically medium by CDC recommendations or guidance. They consider us safe, if, if there is such a word, safe to unmask by current Rhode Island Department of Health guidance. The recommendation is still that we maintain masking indoors. Our vaccination rates in Tiverton are actually not represented well by Rhode Island Department of Health, because we do not, the Department of Health does not capture data on people who receive their vaccinations in Massachusetts. So if you look at sort of the, what's published on the Rhode Island Department of Health website, it looks like we're running at about fifty, fifty-four percent vaccination rates. And in particular, in our under twenty-four age range, we're, we're doing even worse than that. By the survey that we did, and the school committee has this data, but I wanna make it public as well. By the survey we did with about eleven hundred responses from our students and families, our vaccination rates at about seventy percent. And that actually correlates with the data that's generated by the attestation that, that students and their parents hopefully fill out every day. So I am personally comfortable with at least going with a allowing students to decide for themselves, or their parents to decide with them to unmask and for staff to decide for themselves to unmask. However, again, I really think we need to be conscious of the fact that we have to respect the decisions of others to remain masked and also recognize that we may need to go back to masking. And also, you know, even if we wanted to consider waiting a week or two weeks, or you know, take this up again in a little while, that would be another option for us. So those are my comments, I hope I did not take up too much time doing that. But I did wanna at least let people know what I'm thinking, not because what I think is necessarily important intrinsically, but people do know I'm a physician and spend a lot of time at least thinking about these things professionally as well, and so hopefully that will open up some questions, or at least help you in your thinking. So I'm gonna open up the floor to the rest of the committee first. And I'll let Mr. Dakota, why don't you speak first, if you'd like to?
Oh, perfect, thank you, Dr. Larkin. So thank you for that information, I, I thought all the people on this call were for the softball and the baseball at the middle school, but I see now they've waited to hear a little bit more about the masking policy. So I've also put a lot of time into this, I wanna thank everyone in the community that sent an email, and there were many. And I hope that I got back to each and every one of you, thanking you for sharing your concerns and your thoughts and your feedback, I take everything into consideration. Get to talk to a lot of people in the community since I have children in school. And I think this has probably been the thing that's come up on the radar a lot, I don't think there's been a day in the last couple of months where this hasn't come up, and since the Omicron numbers have come down recently, I've heard it more and more, so in, instead of me taking any more time for my other peers and our administration and the parents that came here to speak, I just want to make sure everyone keeps an open mind, I think whatever decision's made tonight, it'll be for the best for their students and for all of us and kind of Tiverton. And hopefully we can all be civil and open minded and respect each other, and I appreciate everyone that reached out, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Palish?
Now, I'm gonna defer my comments until we've heard from the rest of the public, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Pavo?
Yes, I also would like to thank everyone who sent us the, an email. They expressed their concerns, whether they were for unmasking or keeping the masks on, everyone was very respectful in their emails. And it's a personal decision, but it is also a community decision, we have to be respectful of what anyone thinks they should do. I don't feel that we are trying to sway people either way to wear masks or to unmask. If a parent chooses for their children to be masked or a child, I expect the other parents and children to be respectful, respectful of that. the other parents and children to be respectful respectful of that. It's I wouldn't want my child to be bullied or picked on or whatever. And I respect everyone's opinion. We care about the safety of our children in this community. I feel that we always have. And those of us who worked closely with children understand what happens when there's a big change. But I do want to say that I do respect everyone that I heard from. I respect your opinion, and I hope that you respect ours. Thank you.
Excellent. Mrs. Farnworth.
I would like to just ask a couple of questions of Dr. Senkione prior to any comments, if you don't mind.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, Dr. Senkione, are there? I don't see on the screen, but I'm going to trust that you are.
Is there?
I am here.
So can you explain if we were to go ahead and take a vote to suspend our policy? Could you explain where there may be cases where children and or adults would be required to wear a mask?
I'm not sure the word required there would fit.
Well, such as upon return from a quarantine is I I thought I read something that that was still going to be required by the state. Am I am I misunderstanding that?
Yeah, that is not my understanding of the mass suspension policy put out by the state.
Okay. And secondly, would what about if a student is feeling ill and would go to see a nurse? Would it be required for a student to wear a mask in that healthcare setting?
If the student was exhibiting symptoms of COVID that we know are identifiable, the the nurse then could ask the student to put a mask on till they were picked up by their parents. So that would be a short term thing.
Okay.
That's just to protect everyone.
Yes. And then lastly, I know I've read a few things about the CDC and addressing school buses. Has an actual Department of Transportation edict come down at all with regard to school buses?
It has exactly. And they have released the wearing a mask on school buses.
And that's effective?
I believe that's effective now.
Is it? Okay. I I do have some comments to make, but I really would like to hear from the audience members prior to sharing those.
So Diane, I'm just looking at the, there is a memo from, so there's a guidance from the Department of Health. If you go to their the COVID portal, it's the part where it says for community for the public. And then you look at schools. There is, they 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 basically say that their guidance from January 6th with regard to quarantine remains in place. And I'm scanning that document really quickly, but I can put it in the chat and maybe the link in the chat and maybe Julie can disseminate it. So.
Thank you. I'll be interested in reading that.
Yeah. Okay, so that was the school committee. Emma, any questions or comments?
I have a few comments, if that's okay.
Sure.
I just wanted to speak from a student perspective and most more specifically like a senior in high school perspective. Most of the people in my grade all do want to go mask optional. But we are very concerned about the timing of it. Specifically because so many senior events are supposed to happen this year, and we have not had a sense of normalcy in so long, and we are really clinging on to these events. Talking specifically about prom and graduation and even things like senior project presentations, we are all really worried that those are going. If we do unmask and there is a spike in cases again, it the time could work where it gets in the way of something that we've been looking forward to all year and that we've really thought was going to happen all year because we've been taking these precautions. So I just want to make sure in that before everyone makes a decision about whether or not to unmask, we are confident in that even if there is a spike in cases, it's not going to affect the things that students are looking forward to and are sort of clinging on to as a as like a sense of hope. So that's all I'm concerned about from a student perspective.
So yeah, and I think that's a very reasonable concern because we may, you know, it's it's just about two years. In fact, it was, you know, March 13th that the schools were closed for two weeks and then we went to distance learning. So, you know, depending if there was an escalation, how they escalated, then I think that's a legitimate concern. The, you know, one of the things as well is that our current numbers whereas you know, a year ago, when there was not widespread available rapid testing at home. You know, the numbers might be underestimated a little bit, but the thing that balances that actually is relatively widespread vaccination rates. So Rhode Island is actually at 81%. We are the highest in the country. And that's actually not unusual for us. We are, we tend to have good uptake of vaccines and right now at least partially vaccinated, we're at 81%. As I said, the the school district appears to be at about 70%. And the town as a whole, it's hard to gauge because we don't capture Massachusetts data. So hopefully, we will not see a new surge either because the virus is quiescent or because we have high vaccination rates. So but reasonable concerns. Mr. Farley.
Um, yeah. Sort of just echoing those same points that Emma made. I think a large majority of the students do want to see a mask optional decision. However, I think they value events higher than that. Um, as Emma said, they're sort of the only normal thing that we've had this year. Whether that be sports or homecoming, which was earlier this year. Or prom that's coming up. I think the students value that more, at least that's what I've heard than particularly the masks. Additionally, you know, we've seen within the past few days, Oregon, Washington DC, New York City, in Massachusetts take down their mask restrictions. Those are all very big or either populous states, populous cities or large states. I think personally, and I think a lot of the students share this view. I think would be best to see how those states do before we unmask, especially with Massachusetts, because as you said, Dr. Larkin, we as a town are very intertwined with Massachusetts. And in many ways, we're, you know, or at least geographically closer to Massachusetts than most of Rhode Island. So I think it would be best to see how that goes with our neighbors to the north before acting so steadfastly.
Okay. So all right, now I'm going to open up the floor to any of our administrators or teachers or other staff who are present. If you want to address the committee, if you could raise your hand in the chat or I'll call on Mrs. Wardell first, but also if you go down to the chat or no, sorry, reactions to the bottom. So if you're not Zoom savvy at the bottom, there's a little icon that says reactions. If you click on that, you can raise your hand and I will be able to see your hand raised. So, Mrs. Wardell, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you. If we decide to do optional masking, I'd just like to ask if we can have a little clarification for principals and for teachers, what their responsibility will be in that. For example, if student A comes to school and the parent wants a child to be masked, but they see their friends aren't masked, so they take off their mask. Do the teacher or the principal have to contact the parents? Do we have to pull the child aside, tell them to wear the mask? What if they refuse to wear the mask? So if we're going to, if that is something that you decide, I just think that we need to really some additional guidance would really help the principals and teachers in that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I thought about that as well. I think that's a really good question. Other staff, administrators or teachers who would like to address the committee on this issue? I'm just kind of scanning the screens. I have about 50 participants right now. So going once and twice, if you are from the you know, anyone else attending the meeting via Zoom right now. If you raise your hand via the reactions button at the bottom right of your screen, I will try and get to everyone.
Dr. Larkin, if I can interrupt you. I have personally kept track of how people entered the room and the order in which they entered. So I'd love to unmute them based on the people who follow the directions and put their name as well as their address and then the agenda item that they wish to speak on.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Julie to call on people.
Great, thank you. Okay, the first up I have Candace Magnet, who is of 50 Stevens Street, would like to address the Committee on Policy 1187. Go ahead, Candace, and please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Do I have to say my name and address again or am I good?
You're good.
I didn't.
All right. So first I'd like to just bring up a couple of things I mentioned in the past meetings and also again, recently through emails with Peter. I know I'm not the only parent sitting at home completely frustrated at how things have been handled the last couple of years in general. But more so when it comes to what's been going on with our children. Personally, I feel like the administration has failed them. I've asked in the past what steps were being taken to check in on their wellbeing, their mental health, any support that they may be getting if needed. I haven't received anything back. I've checked in with my children. They've never received a survey or any teacher coming into the class, nothing. I've also asked why parents have not been reached out to directly asking us how our kids are handling everything. Wouldn't you think that that would be the step first step in trying to work together to navigate this? These are our kids. We know them best. Two years in and not one check in with us. Not one survey or email has been sent our way. But what we do get is daily texts and emails asking us if our kids have cold symptoms before they go to school, which is pretty common sense. If our kids are sick, we keep them home just as we have in previous years. We get emails reminding us of.
Mrs. Magnet, Miss Magnet, Candace. I I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you here. So this is going to sound a little weird and I recognize that. But we are confined by the open meetings law. And the agenda item is whether or not to suspend the mask policy right now. So I would be in violation of the open meetings law and liable to a complaint or sort of a sanction against me as the chair. If you discussed things other than that, I understand that you're frustrated. I certainly hear that loud and clear. And my best advice to you would be to actually set up a face to face with your principal and start there. But if you have comments that you would like to make about the mask policy specifically, I will turn the floor back to you again. So feel free to unmute yourself and go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it all does eventually roll into the mask policy. All of these.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand your point, but you have to really stick to the masks.
This is all comes from the mask. These things are being affected. My children are being affected because they're they're being masked, yet nobody wants to step in and actually see if they're okay. It has to do with the mask. So we get these surveys asking us if our kids are vaccinated or anything like that. But yet nobody checks in on them how they're doing while masked in school. Why hasn't that been done?
So Mrs. Magnet, I have, I have, I have to thank you for your comments. I know we're going to move on to others, people who would like to speak. My best advice to you again is to set up a meeting with your principal face to face. What school are you at? It looks like maybe Fort Barton. So yeah, I'm sure Mrs. Donnelly would would be happy to sit down with you and sort of kind of maybe debrief the process. It's certainly been a trying couple of years for all of us. So and then just one other point I have to make, if there, especially since there may be a lot of people who would like to speak per policy, we we should limit to about three minutes. So, Ms. Delcourt, who's next?
Yes, the next person we have is Clayanne Viera from Grinnell Avenue in Tiberden, and she also would like to speak of the mask topic. If you have not put your name and your address in the specific policy or the specific item on our agenda that you would like to comment on, I will not recognize you in the chat. So again, please do so. So Clayanne, please do so. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. I just want to say thank you for having this forum where parents are allowed to express what they're looking for and why they're looking for it. I do know that you have the law that you need to abide by and I need to stick to the mask. But I do feel as though I would be completely remiss if I didn't also touch on the immune immunity topic that Dr. Larkin brought up as well. So first and foremost, unmask the kids, leave it up to the parents. As far as those children who are going against what their child has been told at home to do at school, it should be handled like every other behavioral issue in my opinion. It's, you know, every rule for every household is different. And I feel like if the parent has made that decision that, you know, you use the bathroom and you wash your hands at school, you use the bathroom and you wash your hands. It's very general. I think it needs to be structured and I agree with full support on any staff who who has that struggle. Because I do understand that parents and teachers are different and kids will definitely see that difference. But back to the mask thing as well. I completely understand where you're coming from by emphasizing what you believe to be true about the vaccine. And that is totally fine. And I don't care if the kids around my kids are vaccinated or not. There are so many invisible diseases out there. We have gone through other pandemics that were not as easy of easy to capture or to separate people from. You know, I can think of TV right off the top of my head. You're not even allowed to ride a bus if you have TV. Yet there's no test out there to prevent us from knowing if the person next to us has it. There is a medical protocol that is called universal precaution for a reason. You always assume that the person next to you could give you the deadliest disease. And you don't let that fear stop you from going outside or going to school or going to the bus or going to your favorite movie show or music concert, any of that, because that is a risk that comes with going into the public. Now you've also touched on that we are a community and that this isn't just an individual decision. And while I agree with you half on that, because I do believe all of our children are in a community, the decision on what we put into our bodies and how we cover them is personal choice. We would not stop someone from wearing religious jewelry. We would not tell someone to put on religious jewelry to make others comfortable. That is not what a community does. A community respects everyone in their individuality that comes to this group. And that's what makes it the strongest is allowing people to be different and still cohesive in one place. So whether parents choose to mask their kids or not, whether a parent chooses to get their child vaccinated or not is no longer an issue. It needs to move forward. We've had this for two years. I know I'm running out of my time. And we've had time to adjust. The medical world has come so far in learning how to care for COVID, prevent COVID and make testing available if you think you are sick. That's all I have to say. You're muted. I can't hear you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Ms. Delcourt, anybody else?
Yes, Dr. Larkin, the next person we have is Lauren Gilmore of 19 Furway in Tiberden, also addressing the mask policy. also addressing the mask policy. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Lauren.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, great. So first, I'd just like to say thank you for allowing parents or any one of the community the opportunity to speak today. This is my first time speaking in a forum like this, so I appreciate the opportunity. I hundred percent respect any, any parent's decision to mask or not mask their child. I also understand the seniors in school and their desire to want to partake in all of those special things that, you know, my generation and other generations have been able to do. My child, however, is in elementary school, and younger children develop so quickly, and their moments are passing them by, and every week matters. Every day matters to them. We can't continue to mask based on fear that the flu is gonna resurge or that colds are gonna resurge, because eventually we're gonna have to unmask. And those are, those colds and those flus are gonna come back regardless. Although Rycast may not show a loss in the education levels of our students based on test results, no one knows what's happening behind closed doors, and we are the safe zone for our children. So we hear how they're reacting to all of this, especially the masks. We hear about that personally from them. We hear about the anxieties, the sadness, the pressure that's put on them in the schools. So if there were a test to gauge emotional well-being of our children as opposed to Rycast testing, I do think that it would be a very different result. I'm lucky enough to have a pretty resilient kid, and she has not had any ill effects from mask-wearing outside of it being super annoying and just inconvenient. However, I've heard testimonies of friends and family about their children who really have suffered emotionally, educationally, mentally. It really saddens me that we're putting this on our children. Parents know their children best. Every kid, every human being learns differently. And we all have different needs on how we learn and how we interact with others in social interactions and situations. And it's the school's job to cultivate a culture where our children can learn best. Our parents, our children, we know them best. So if somebody chooses to mask their child, and that's what they feel is best in the interest of their kid, then that's great. If I choose to send my child to school without a mask, then I'm doing that for a reason, because I know that she needs to see smiles, that she needs to see somebody's mouth moving in a way that she can properly pronounce her words. So every kid is different. Every parent knows their kids more than any teacher, principal, school committee member, or anyone outside of the home. I do think that parents need to have the choice and respect others that choose to wear masks or not wear masks. But I do think it's up to the school systems to cultivate an environment of tolerance and an environment where each child is given the opportunity to learn the way they learn best. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for the opportunity. Please allow parents the choice to choose what's best for their children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Delcourt?
Yes, the next person up is Denise Miller from forty-seven Tanglewood Drive, speaking also on the mask policy. Denise, go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, hello. So my name is Denise Miller. I'm sure you've seen the petition that I dropped off today, also emailed all the committee members. I'm representing about four hundred people, Tiverton Parents for Choice. These are people within the community that feel that it's time for us as parents and just in general, just to take back the, the decision-making for our children. I'm, I'm happy to hear that we are going to, you're proposing to suspend the policy. However, the policy just needs to go away. It does not belong in a school policy. Vaccinations are widely available for everybody. Teachers can get boosted. People have the opportunity to upgrade their masks. We should not be, once this, once the masks are taken off our children, we should not be putting them back on regardless of, of the cases. We cannot continue to keep doing this to our children. The lawsuit that's going on in Rhode Island right now, Southwell versus McKee, the judge already established that irreparable harm is happening to Rhode Island children for long-term mask-wearing. The Rhode Island Department of Health does not have any long-term studies that supports long-term masking of children. They don't have any. They've been compelled by Superior Court to provide evidence of their decisions to mask children, and they, they have not provided it yet because they don't have it. Dr. McDonald testified under oath that he does not have it. The Rhode Island Department of Health does not have it. So for you to say that the mask policy could come back, that should be moot at this point. Everybody has the opportunity to protect themselves. The vaccines don't stop the spread. And at the very beginning of this whole pandemic-
Okay, Ms. Miller, your, your three minutes, your three minutes have actually passed, so if you could just please wrap it up?
Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Since she referenced it, I just want to point out that a third of the signatures on the petition were not Tiverton residents. They were from as far away as Las Vegas.
Yeah, but they were also-
Ms. Miller, time has passed. Ms. Delcourt, who's next?
Our next speaker is going to be Daniel Bruckhurst, or Bruckelhurst, from thirty-nine Taravirde Drive. If you could unmute yourself.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
All right, I think I'm probably gonna be one of the more briefer testimonies, but I'm, I called in to implore you guys to make masks optional. You know, we could go back and forth on, you know, the argument of mask effectiveness, but I think for this, it wouldn't really be a good use of our time. I think it's time to kind of move on because of just the, the world we're in right now. I mean, we just came back from winter vacation, and it was confusing to my daughter getting back into the mask routine because she's literally not had to wear it anywhere. So, I mean, our kids are the last ones that are being forced to kind of carry on this burden. And I mean, you can see it elsewhere, too. I mean, the CDC just recently released guidance on such a thing. And I looked it up, and as of February twenty-second, Rhode Island was like a, a medium-level community. And with that, the CDC recommends that immunocompromised, sorry, I can never pronounce that word, or those at high risk of severe illness should mask. It doesn't mention anything about children. And I mean, we're also at a point where, I mean, Saturday Night Live is even coming out with skits, you know, referencing kind of the fact that masks maybe not worked, but we're at a point where we can maybe move forward and be reflective on what we did. So I would hope that, you know, after listening to the parents and taking everything into consideration, you would move on to make, you know, masks optional. And that's all I gotta say.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Delcourt?
Yes, our next person to speak is Catherine Logan, who is our speech pathologist located at Pecassett Elementary School. Catherine may have dropped off. Catherine, I'm gonna count. Oh, there you are. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm here. I'm going to be extremely brief. I'm actually the long-term subspeech pathologist at Pecassett, but have been in this profession for over twenty years. And I would just like those voting tonight to consider the students at our schools that do have speech and language delays and disorders, our hearing impaired community at our schools. And for those students that are having difficulty learning to read, that having access to, and being able to see someone make those speech sounds is extremely helpful. So as we're voting tonight, whether we vote to keep the mask mandate, if we vote to keep the mask mandate, if there could potentially be some exemption for those particular students. And I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. I guess I'm gonna ask a question of Peter. I would have thought that it can be written into the IEP that, especially if, you know, as Catherine was referencing, if there are issues with a particular student and they're learning that they're, that they can be unmasked based on IEP, how it's written, is that not true, or is that?
Well, I, I think it's hard for a IEP to go against a school district policy. I think there's a big conflict there. So we've always erred on the side of being safe for our students and up here, upstanding our policy. The, there's a great point being made about how that interferes with the learning of students with masks on, especially for speech and language, but.
Okay. Got it. Ms. Delcourt?
Yes, our next speaker is going to be Jessica Perry from one-four-one Holly Circle, speaking about the mask policy as well. Jessica, please unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, how are, how is everyone? I just have two quick questions about should we vote to remove the masks at school? What the testing will be at the school level to catch the virus quickly versus waiting for students to develop symptoms either at school or at home? And the other question is about will children still be able to return on day five while recovering from COVID? And if they are, will they be required to wear masks?
Peter, you wanna take that, or I'm gonna try it?
I'm happy to take it, Dr. Locken. So the, the last part of the question is, as long as the student's returning asymptomatic, they would not be required to wear a mask? Because again, if the, if the school committee votes that policy to remove the mask, that's what would be in place. The first part of that question, if you could repeat that again?
Yeah, I was just wondering what the testing will be for students. So far, the school hasn't really been able to provide asymptomatic testing. So if we go mask-free, will that, will there be a policy to implement asymptomatic testing so we can catch the virus before it erupts throughout the school?
Yeah, there, there won't be a policy to do wholesale asymptomatic testing across the board. It's, it's a capacity issue for us in the sense of our, our nurses typically do that testing, and they're fully subscribed with their other responsibilities. But we do as much as we can. We do testing of all our athletes at the middle and the high school. And we do symptomatic testing. As you know, we have a drive-up test center at the middle school every day for students who are symptomatic. So we're, we're, I would say we are fully at capacity with all the testing that we can do at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Delcourt, thank you, Ms. Perry, for your comments.
And yes, the next speaker we have is Anthony Richardson of Seventeen Colonial Ave, speaking about the mask policy. Anthony, if you could unmute yourself, please.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Yeah, just, I'm hoping this committee will vote for masks being optional, mainly because our neighbors to each side of us, I believe Portsmouth already reported that they are going to drop their mask on the fourth, I believe. And I just read that nearby Somerset and Westport are going, have already effectively dropped their mask policy February twenty-eighth. Fall River is going to drop their mask policy on the fourteenth of this month. So I don't think we're that much different of a community from those three towns. I know Fall River probably have a, a much bigger school system than we do. And I'm not, I know some, a couple of the students that were on here have mentioned about, I guess, testing and possible spike in cases, but I'm not sure how that's gonna happen if the CDC is not acknowledging PCR tests anymore. So I'm not sure how that, how we even gonna get the accurate numbers on that. I think the FDA is probably waiting on a, some sort of test that can differentiate between COVID and the flu. That's, that's what I, I've read on their website, but I'm not sure how that is. But yeah, masks should be optional. I think even if the kids want it, they, they feel more comfortable wearing a mask and let them wear it, even if my kids, I'm, I'm against the mask altogether, but they feel more comfortable in wearing it. I'm not gonna stop them. I don't think any, I don't think anybody here in this community will make fun of a, a person that wants to keep wearing that mask even if all the policies are dropped. I think that is their personal business. Just the rest of us would like to be respected if we don't want to wear a mask or don't want to get vaccinated, things of that nature. So I'm, I'm hoping you voted for the mask optional, and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Delcourt?
Yes, and Dr. Larkin, having done a sound, a, a quick check to make sure I've gotten everyone and posted once again the directions, I can comfortably say we have no more speakers signed up.
Okay, thank you for helping us manage that. So I'm gonna come back to the committee and give everybody one more, another chance to sort of ask questions or express our opinions. So, Ms. Posh, I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Larkin, and thank you, everyone that spoke and, and wrote to us. I just made a couple of notes. I think Principal Wardell, the, the comment about, you know, how, how, how do we start a deal with if the parent wants kids to have the mask and, you know, the kids don't want to have it? And I think I agree with the parent who commented that, you know, we handle it. You know, we have a lot of discipline problems, not problems, I shouldn't say that. We have, we have, we have discipline issues. We have, you know, we have things that, you know, kids will do differently at home than they do at school. And when we don't have a policy, I think the superintendent and the administration has a lot of latitude of how to deal with that. So we don't really need a policy, in my opinion, to deal with it. But I do recommend that the admin team and the Dr. Sekiony certainly meet and, and discuss it and communicate with parents where that might be an issue. The senior activities, I think that is the reason why I know I recommend that we suspend. I, I know there's certainly parents who would like to see it eliminated. There were, there are parents that would like to see it not suspended, but by suspending it, we do put ourselves in a position, you know, that we have a policy, if we need to, we can react. And it would take a majority vote of that, this board to do that. So, so that's one of the reasons I'm, you know, in, in support of suspending. And if this board at any time feels that, you know, we need to eliminate it and, and we can move on from it, we can, again, with three votes, it can, it can be eliminated by this board or any future board. As far as waiting, I think I heard a comment about waiting for other towns. I'm really, I'm not in favor of that because at this point, when, you know, most workplaces are open, you know, without masks, it's masks optional. Most, a lot of, you know, where we're going, stores, you know, you like, you know, a lot of the places that we are outside of school are now mask optional. Our surrounding communities, someone made the point, are mask optional. We don't live in a bubble in our school community. So I, I just feel like I'm not sure what we'd be protecting them from for just waiting. We're to the point, all the guidance that we're given, all of the, all of everything that, you know, we've seen, that we're at a point where at least I'm comfortable saying, you know, mask optional is, is the way to go. And I, I do encourage people. I still, I have someone who is compromised, and when I go out, I do wear my N95 mask. So I encourage people, if, if you feel you still need to do that, you should, and you will be encouraged, you will be supported, whether you're a staff or a child, you will be supported. You know, continuing to do that, but I am comfortable suspending and approving the motion and going mask optional. Thank you, Dr. Larkin.
Okay. Mrs. Farnworth?
Thank you, Dr. Larkin. First of all, I do want to thank everyone who, who sent us emails. Who sent messages, who, who called. I, I listened, I read. I, and I may not have responded to each individual email, but know that I did read, read each and every one. I also want to thank the folks who, who took the courage to attend our meeting tonight and, and speak on behalf of what you believe, and I, I believe it was wholehearted. That, that every speaker who, who visited with us this evening wanted to see masks be made optional a, a, at least. And I, I will support that. I also, however, want to recognize that there were a number of messages that I, I know I received and certainly most of them were copied for the whole committee of parents who have concerns. And, you know, the, the promises of respect from our community for those who choose to continue to wear masks or have their children wear masks, I, I really do hope that that ends up being the case. You know, we have gone through a very long two years. Now, our, our community at large has suffered from many losses. We've had children who have lost parents and grandparents. I, I, I would doubt that anyone that's listening this evening hasn't known someone that has either died or been severely hurt by the impact of COVID nineteen or, or any related causes. You know, and I, I throw myself right in there, you know, I've, I've suffered loss as well. I know how serious this has been. But I also do think that, given the data that we're now seeing, given the fact that the community at large, and I do mean the region, and its current approach to masks being optional pretty much everywhere with the exception of healthcare settings. You know, it would make no sense for our school district to be an outlier from that. It, it just, you know, to Mrs. Palash's statement, you know, I, it really got to me, you know, what are we protecting them from? You know, I, I went to a restaurant last weekend. They were and I know I had to wait an hour for a table, so I think things are going back to normal very quickly. I saw two people with masks in that restaurant and it had to have been a good couple hundred. You know, clearly, our region i- is ready to put the masks down. However, I do want to, you know, again, support those who, who have very good reasons in, in all cases to be either fearful for their own health or the health of someone that they love. Again, I will support the optional masking. I will support the suspension of the policy. I, I hope and pray that we never have to reinstate any such policy, that we don't have a severe downturn from, from the pandemic. I, I really do. But the fact that it, you know, it remains suspended out there does, does give us that option to react should we ever need to. With regard to that I, I only have one more thing. You know, one of the things I've thought of a- as we've gone through all of this and I, you know, I, I read the papers, I, I I do a fair amount of reading of what people's opinions are. And, and the one thing I think we need to remember as well is that the children, you know, our mission is to educate the children. No doubt about it, your children. But we also have to recognize that those children are not in the buildings alone. Nor have they been i- in the last couple of years. Our teachers, our assistants, the rest of the staff, they're all here with our children on a daily basis. And we had every duty to protect them as best as we could as well. And I take their health into consideration as I support this decision as well, especially knowing that from what I understand, they back it as well. So I will, I think that's all I have. Thank you, Dr. Larkin.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Dakotas?
Uh, thank you. So some of what my fellow constituents already said, thank you for everyone that spoke. Great to have everyone have a voice is a community decision, just because we are the school committee. We are not the iron fist of the district. We represent the people and we always want to listen to the people. Their opinion is important to us. And like I said earlier, appreciative of everyone that had something to say. I do want to make one, one comment. And it's really not based upon what I heard tonight, but it was on some of the emails and I, I'll admit, most of the emails I got were pro-choice emails. However, there were a few that were asking to please, let's keep the mask on at least for the rest of the winter or whatever it was. And I just want to make sure that, you know, both sides are heard. There's opinions and reasons for everything. Data suggests at one point that masks stopped spread. It seemed like with Omicron, it you know, it was that people were gonna get it no matter what they did. And we are here now, almost two years later after the start of this. You know, I do know people that have passed away from COVID. I, I, I would never say it's the flu. I think the entire world went through this. This isn't a different thing or Rhode Island thing, or this was a world thing. We went through it. It was a pandemic. There's no question about it. And we want to make sure that we always do the best thing for our, for our kids. Safety in mind, right? We always say safety. I, I work in pharmaceuticals, doctors take an oath, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, nurses do no harm. Safety first. Dr. Larkin can attest to that. And I want to make sure that whatever decision we make tonight, which seems like a, a, an, an option to have the masks come off and stay on for others, that we as parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles and administrators and teachers, we take this very seriously. If these masks come off, we have to make sure that the kids that do continue to wear masks, we need to uphold that. There's to be no teasing. There's no tolerance for that. We need to make sure that everyone is comfortable coming to school, whether they're unmasked or they're masked. That's something that I want to reiterate to everyone, whether the people on this meeting, but to our whole community. We need to make sure that we respect everyone in the end. We're civil, respectful. So so far, so good. I'm very happy we've had this meeting and thank you for listening to me and it was a pleasure to listen to all of you. Appreciate it.
Okay, and Mrs. Pavel?
I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor. The guess my only last comment is that this remains a dynamic situation. Hopefully COVID is done, but I'm not positive it is. So I'm gonna ask for a vote. This is to suspend the mask policy effective March fourth at five PM. Mr. Dakotas, you're the only mister on the media, I guess.
Yeah, that was a two, it was coming my way. I will say yes, emphatically yes.
Okay. Mrs. Pavel?
Yes.
Mrs. Farnworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Palash?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion passes. Uh, thank you, everyone. And, and again, thank you for everyone's comments. And also recognizing that there are, you know, very strongly held views on this and you know, there are not, there's a variety of views. So anyway, we are now moving to I've lost my agenda.
Announcements.
Yep, no, no, we have the item six D discussion of new stage one building authority. So I had
Dr. Larkin, I have a motion on this item, please.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion that we continue this until the March eighth meeting. If I get a second, I'll explain my motion.
Okay.
I will second that out of curiosity.
Okay, and open it for discussion, Mrs. Palash.
So I still don't understand stage one, stage two. I still don't understand the whole process. On March eighth, we're having a ride representative come before us to explain the process to us. I probably have eleven or twelve questions for that representative. So it would be my preference before we start talking about any of the process that we are able as a board to hear that presentation and to ask our questions. So I would prefer to continue this until we've heard from Ride and asked our questions.
Okay, well, this was my agenda item and I'm fine doing that. I can explain my rationale, which was that, as you know, the stage one letter has to be signed by the superintendent, by the chairman of the school committee, and then a municipal representative, presumably the council. And my view of it was it was a purely ministerial function, at least in terms of my signing it. And so I just, but I wanted to bring it back to, and, and because we were under a deadline, it had to be submitted on February fifteenth and we had discussed it, but not sort of formally as an agenda item. I just wanted to bring it back to the committee to make sure that they wanted to proceed. You know, we could always sort of not have a lot to go forward. But I am fine continuing it until next Tuesday. I'll open up the floor to other committee members. Mrs. Farnworth?
I, I, I think it would make sense to continue it. That way we can ask the questions directly, right?
Okay, and Mr. Dakotas? Comments, questions?
No comments, no.
Mrs. Pavel?
No comments. I feel that we should just move it to next week's meeting.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. I see Denise present. I don't know if you have anything to say or Ms. Demidaris?
What is this much eighth meeting about?
So the March eighth meeting, so we had sent a notification.
So, so Gary, we have a motion and a second to continue this item to March eighth.
I agree. I have no comment.
Okay, uh, well, I think it's still within the realm of the posting to, or whatever to, to say it is.
You have a live motion and you got a second from a board member. And then if we continue it, there'll be no discussion on the item. We're only discussing whether we're gonna continue it or not. If the people want, if people want to discuss it, the board wants to discuss it, then vote the motion down.
We I think you're splitting hairs by saying that I can't answer the questions. I can answer the question. March eighth meeting is with the director of the school building authority. We had invited the town council, but I'm not sure that you guys were gonna come. So the motion is on the floor. I'll take a vote. Mrs. Farnworth?
I'll vote yes to table.
Mr. Dakotas?
Yeah.
Mrs. Pavel?
Yes.
Miss Palash? And I'll vote yes. So that item is tabled. The, the next item is probably announcements if we're lucky.
Yes, yes.
So we have a meeting on the eighth. We're discussing the FY twenty-three budget, the school calendar, as well as the now the stage one application and meeting with Mr. Kreeno from the school building authority. Uh, and then we have a meeting on the twenty-second on, and next is, then after that, April twelfth and presumably the twenty-sixth. Any other discussion or comments about the meeting?
I have a question. Go ahead, go ahead, Diane.
Um, I'm just wondering, are we gonna be continuing to meet virtually? Or, or will we be migrating back to meeting in person?
So my, and I may, I don't remember the exact date, but my understanding is that the ability to meet virtually is expiring, is it not?
Um, I, 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 I don't know for certain, but my best recollection is that it was currently intended to expire in the area of March twenty-fourth.
Recording in progress.
Yeah, that was my understanding too.
That we meet virtually, that we can until then.
Right, and when we, so when we, when I polled the committee, the majority wanted to continue work, meaning the last decision was the polling of the committee was that we continue to meet virtually until we can't. That was the, the consensus. We can discuss that further now or, but that, that's my understanding. If any other member there committee feels differently, sort of pursue it. Have at it now. I won't even call on you. You can just unmute and
Well, I, I don't know if having a full-on discussion about it falls within open meetings, to be honest.
It does. No, it does, because it's setting up, we, we are not compelled by the open meetings law to post to discuss how and when we meet.
Okay.
So so I don't know if anybody has any other comments. I am going to
Do we know if we can even, I, I think we need some clarification before our next meeting, whether we can even still continue to meet via Zoom.
I'll get that for you.
Yeah, it's, it's not the eighth. It was sometime in the middle of March, it expires. Maybe it's the twenty-fourth as Diane. I just don't remember the date.
No, and I, I, I did read that the legislature is looking to perhaps extend that or, or at least give flexibility to, to bodies to maybe work hybrid or allow for remote participation, even if we're in person or, or what have you. But I don't, I don't think anything has come of it yet.
So then for the eighth, as far as we know, unless Peter tells us differently, we're continued to remeet remotely?
Uh, yeah, it looks like it's maybe the nineteenth that it expires.
I'll confirm that for you, Dr. Larkin.
Yeah, it says, I'm just looking at Google, the new executive order allowing remote meetings, but not requiring remote access expires March ninth, nineteenth, sorry, nineteenth. About a week before McKee's broader, something else, blah, 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 blah. Yeah. So nineteenth, it looks like it is, but yeah, maybe Peter, if you can clarify it for sure. Anything else about meetings or agendas?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
The meeting on March eighth, is this, what's listed here, is this the entire agenda?
No. I don't
The school calendar, it's gonna be more than that.
Um, yeah.
Renewals on that evening?
Potentially, but potentially not to.
It's so Okay, thank you.
Diane, you had something?
I, I was just gonna add, there's gonna be probably first read of a couple of policies as well.
Okay. Yeah, that agenda is not fully established yet, so we'll see. Hey, anything else? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second.
Nothing fast. Mrs. Pavel?
Yes.
Mr. Dakotas?
Yes.
Mrs. Palash? Mrs. Palash, she's adjourned. Okay.
Yes, I thought she already adjourned.
I know, she adjourned to the bottom. Mrs. Farnworth?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we